It's not safe. I would not encourage it. Not have the camera on. Not in public.
Okay, everybody. Welcome to the August 8th staff meeting. So, good morning to everybody. Thank you for the turnout yesterday at the event we had. It was very nice. But now we're back to some good business today. Okay.
Several items today, Chairman and Commission. Good morning. First, Mike Elpers will just give us a brief update. Odyssey went live this week. We've been talking about it for years. And it's up our mind. So, Mike will give us an update on that. Tanya will give a very brief, high overview of where we're at with the Psych Hospital project. And then we'll get into the topics that we had actually scheduled for today. Lindsay will talk about, give an explanation on fund balance dynamics, just since we're in budget season. And then we'll turn it over to Sheena at that point. She's going to talk about the Evergreen analysis and kind of the communications and where that process is at. I'll remind you, the commission has not voted on budget yet. It is in the recommended budget, but it's not been approved yet. So, and then she also is going to talk about parental leave. We have discussed that a number of times as the staff and commission, starting two retreats ago during a budget retreat. And we've talked about it on and off. And we're to the point now where we have some policy formation. We'd like to talk through that today and see what the commission's will is to move forward or not with that project. So, Mike, you'll start us off with Odyssey.
Okay. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. So, as expected, Odyssey went live Monday morning, yesterday morning. It was a big race to the finish line. There was a lot of work done over the weekend and in the previous weeks and months leading up to yesterday. Everything is going well. The data is coming over from Odyssey into the DA's Just Where system, as expected. They keep a really close eye on the logs for that and spot errors. And when they, when they get one, they investigate it, they find the source, and they fix it. So, it's going well. They have a open Zoom call on during the day that people can join at any time. Any of the outside agencies can join at any time to convey any kind of access issues that they're having. And OJA is onsite and they're working with those people directly to resolve those issues. OJA and DA's office and the vendor Tyler Technology are both onsite. They have a standing meeting every day at 3:00 to go through any issues that have come up or answer any questions that they have. But it's, it's going well. They are, you know, there were some things that they left kind of off of the table for go-live that they didn't really need, but they were still part of the requirements for this project. So, they're circling back and kind of filling in those areas when they can. And yesterday, I got news that they're even now shifting their focus back to the RFP process for the District Attorney's new records management system. So, the fact that they're moving from the Odyssey project back into their normal life is, is a good thing to hear. Greg Gann has really been leading the efforts. Yang Li, one of our IT developers, Angelie Lowe, John Waller in the DA's office, have really been committed to this and have been doing just outstanding work to get ready for it. And Greg couldn't be here this morning, so if there's more detail or if you have specific questions that, that I can't answer, I'll be sure to get those to you.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Quickly, the courts are shut down right now. Correct? We're not holding court as a result of this going live.
I thought, I thought they were out Friday, but they are operational.
They're back operational.
Yeah. It was just Friday, to my knowledge.
So, it was only one day we were down on court.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Busy time for IT. Greg couldn't be here. We, in addition to elections and Odyssey, and we're going to be putting 911 back into 714 North Main. It's on your calendar for a ribbon cut next week, so a lot going on in IT.
And did I hear at one time, is the connectivity to the sheriff's process, is that all good? Does the sheriff even involve?
Yeah, they, all law enforcement agencies use what OJA calls the elevated portal for access. And there are some, there are some things that, you know, there, there were some wrinkles that we had to iron out when that went live. But that's kind of what that open Zoom call is for. So, for anybody within the county or outside the county that is having issues with that, they can jump on a call and we get those resolved. But yeah, I believe the sheriff has all the access he needs.
You have other questions?
I don't know, not really a question. But I did talk to Greg last week and he seemed a lot, he felt a lot better about it, I'll just say, at the end of last week than prior when we had talked before. So, I'm really happy to hear that everything's going as well as it ought to be. I mean, the live, even the best of the lives, there's bumps. So, that's expected, but thank you so much for all the work that you put into it because I can't imagine that it was easy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Tanya, Psych Hospital update?
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Just want to give you an update on mental health hospitals. So, we received funding from the state to be able to move forward to award to the architectural firm. So, pardon me, $60,000. But that allowed us to be able to move forward to start to engage architectural firm. So, we awarded to GLMV, and they have teamed up with Pulse Design Group. Pulse Design Group is out of Kansas City, and they are strictly a healthcare-focused architectural group. They're also an on-call behavioral health architectural firm that has an on-call contract with the state of Kansas. And so, we have assembled the county team on this project, who will be Tim Kaufman, Deputy County Manager, Andrew Dilts, who's the Director of Facilities, and myself. And then the state team from Kdad's will be Melinda Gall, who is the Special Project Manager, Irina Yarominka, who is the State Hospital Commission Director of Operations, Lindsay Dinkle, who will be the Superintendent of Lorna State Hospital, starting in September. Right now, she's the Assistant Superintendent. And then Ashley Beerum, who is the Superintendent of Oswatomi State Hospital. And so, we are going to get started on programming next week. And we have, I will tell you, we have a very aggressive timeline on this. Programming starts next week, and we will be completed September 12th. And then we will directly go into schematic design the next day, so October, excuse me, August 13th. And then that will be completed, excuse me, that should be September 13th. And then we'll be completed with schematic design October 17th. So, about 60 days on that. And then just another update, Communications is working with Finance to put up a website so that anything related to mental health hospital, any information that the public is asking about mental health hospital, anything that vendors are asking about the mental health hospital, can be directed to this website. And so, that should be, we're hoping, up and running by this week.
Okay. That's helpful.
Glad to answer any questions that you have on this.
So, we've only gotten $60,000 out of $50 million or so that we need to be able to do this. What's the process so that we don't have to use any of our county funds to get this thing done on time?
I might defer to Lindsay, but I know that they're working on getting the funding.
So, we had the MOU that was put in place, and it said that we do want to advance fund any part of the project. My understanding is the state is wanting to do this kind of in chunks and so that we can make sure that we're meeting the milestones that they expect of us. So, this is the very first allocation. We expect there to be more state general fund money coming to allow us with the design and architectural permits, all of those kinds of things. And then we will have to go out for solicitation for the construction. But in order to do that, we have to have some plans. So, hopefully, the $60,000 will cover that. And then I don't know if Tim has any information on when the next agreement might be coming down the line, but I expect that we'll have just kind of little pop-up grant agreements like we did going forward.
I think it's going to be dependent on, as soon as we've got documents that we can convert into something that we can get bid out.
For the $60,000, does that come from Kdad's or from, it came from Kdad's. But where's the 25 million?
But my understanding is the whole allocation will flow through Kdad's. That State Spark has authorized the money to go to Kdad's, and then Kdad's to pass that along to us.
Well, we're going to need to know if we ever have to dip into county funds in order to make this project successful.
Yeah, I agree. We, I think, legal, finance, I know Tanya and Tim, we have all been as clear as we can be that that's what was envisioned in the MOU, and that's what we expect because it's not fair to county taxpayers to have to shoehorn any part of this.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman.
You have other questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, Tanya, can you clarify, what is the scope of services for this architecture? Who, who did you say the architect is again?
GLMV. GLMV is the local, and Pulse Design Group is out of Kansas City. So, they have teamed up together on this. And they are doing, the first portion is programming. So, out of that, what they're going to tell us is, okay, confirmed, this is this many thousand square feet. You'll need this for a site, you know, approximately one acre, two acres for a site plan. That's what will come out of that. And then the next phase is schematic design. So, that will be a layout of what potentially it could look like.
So, that's the next 60 days programmatic and then, and then schematic?
Program will probably take 30 days, and schematic will take another 30 days.
And then it goes back out to RFP?
Correct. Then we'll go back out to RFP for the next phase of architectural. So, out of that, next phase, we'll get design development, construction documents, and construction administration. So, that'll take us through the final phase of the construction piece.
Very good. Thanks.
And if I could, that's going to be a little more complicated because that will be funded with the ARPA funds. So, we'll have to make sure all of those documents are compliant with federal rules. So, that'll be exciting.
Do you foresee there being any kind of holdup receiving the money from the state? I know with the $60,000, there was a wait. And I just want to make sure that if we're moving as quickly as we can, that we're not going to be held up in the process to receive the next allocation of funding. So, when we get past the 60 days, are we going to have another wait like we did the first time before we can go to the next step? Or what do you think that looks like?
So, my opinion on this is, I think, kind of getting through this first phase of getting the $60,000, I think we've kind of gone through the process. So, my opinion on this is it's not going to take as long since we've done through the process. Somebody knows how it will go.
This first process, is that going to decide whether or not we're existing building or new building? Is it going to decide on location, on purchasing property? What is this first phase going to end up with?
Sure. So, so this first part will just tell us basically the square footage of what we'll need. And then the schematic will lay out if we're going to go with a new building. What my hope is, is that while they're, they're doing the schematic process, is that we will use an on-call real estate broker, kind of in, in conjunction with while they're doing schematic, to then do an RFP to go out to look for existing buildings and then vacant land. Because out of programming, that'll tell us what we need for a site selection as well as square footage. So, we can do both. We can look for vacant land. At the same time, we can also look for existing buildings. So, we should do, we should be able to do that congruent with the schematic design.
The other loose-hanging piece here is there is an, the governor is appointing an oversight group on this. I got my letter a week or two ago, and I'm on that oversight. But there's a commissioner also, Chairman, I think you, I don't know if you got notice or not. And I thought we had, maybe the sheriff is on that too. And that's a 15-member oversight panel, which will also help keep this thing on track politically so it continues to move and we don't get logjammed. That, I don't know that the governor signed the executive order on that yet.
Not to my knowledge.
But I know they're, they're teeing it up.
Good progress. Okay. Next time.
All right, Commissioners. I hope you have your coffee ready. So, we've had a lot of discussion recently about fund balance, what is the proper amount of fund balance. I know that's, that came up during our Act for Presentation on the audit. And we talk a lot about what's in the budget. So, I was going to put together some slides, and then I thought, it's probably not necessary to go through that. So, when you look in your budget book, you will see that there's a certain amount of budgeted expenditures and a certain amount of budgeted revenues. And there is a gap within our property tax-supported funds. We have about a $48.5 million gap between the amount of spending authority that we've got and the amount of anticipated revenue that will come in. In our other funds, our non-property tax-supported funds, we've got $17.2 million more in expenditures than we do revenues that we're counting on coming in. So, the state requires that we have a balanced budget that's in the Constitution. And the way we do that is through, we basically count on fund balance to shore up that difference. Now, of this $48 million in our property tax-supported funds, we've discussed a lot about contingencies. And I had sent you the note that detailed what the different contingencies were, how much they were, how they've changed over the last couple of years. And so, what that depicts is $34 million in contingency. So, when we talk about the gap between the amount of budget authority and the amount of cash we actually expect to come in, in the course of a year, the bulk of that is going toward contingency. So, it's really important to note that we're not planning to ask for property taxes from people to support a single penny of that contingency budget authority. It is simply there if we need it. And obviously, after, so in 2020, we had COVID, but we had carers, and so we were able to dip into those funds. Well, we were all cute and naive when we thought COVID would be over quickly. And so, we had planned to use some of the cash that was put into the general fund from carers to shore up our expenses in 2021 because we'd only need a quarter, quarter's worth of expenses. Yeah, that didn't turn out to be the case when ARPA did come out, which again, we didn't even know that was going to come out. But when ARPA came out, it had all of those intense rules. We also were waiting, if you remember, we had an interim final rule. And so, we were waiting for rules to come out, so we couldn't dip into ARPA. The result was that we spent down every penny of our contingencies in 2021. And so, that's why we do have slightly more budget authority and contingencies now. But again, every penny of that would come from our fund balance if we had to access it. And of course, you have a policy on how we can use fund balance, one-time projects. We can use it for pilot programs. We can use it for risk management if there's a particularly large settlement that comes in. We can use it for legal bills, things like that. So, I just wanted to quickly cover that for all of you and, and make it also crystal clear, hopefully, to the public or anyone who's watching, that we aren't taxing to support those contingencies, even though they went up. So, that's all I wanted to say. What questions can I answer?
Okay. Well, that was a nice, big-picture summary. Yeah. Any questions on that?
Sweet.
You said it nicely. Very good, Lindsay. Thank you very much for that update. Okay.
All right. Now, we'll move on to the interesting stuff. Sorry, Lindsay, no pun intended. Sheena's going to talk about the 2024 Evergreen Compensation update. And again, to remind, the commission has not approved the Evergreen budget yet. And that's in general, that's in the recommended budget. Some of this is redundant, and she's gone over this again. But it's important for our employees especially to hear this again, kind of, and the state of where we're at today and the communications that are going to come out in the next few weeks. So, I've asked Sheena to go over that.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Sheena.
Good morning. As Tom said, I'm just going to recap what we've done with the Evergreen study and plans moving forward with that. Just as a reminder, the goal of this study is just focusing on our general pay plan. We went through and we reviewed with our vendor, Evergreen, the placement of all of those classifications. It included a market analysis. And in that process, we went through and looked at who our comparable market would be and agreed upon that within the scope of the RFP. We made adjustments where necessary, both internally and externally. And another goal was to increase that wage minimum to $15 an hour. And finally, we wanted to create a new, updated general pay plan. The Evergreen study itself focused on a classification analysis. We first started off by reviewing the current job descriptions. And I will say, one thing, within this process, we discovered that many job descriptions were out of date. So, HR is continuously working with departments to update those job descriptions to make sure that we accurately capture what employees are doing within those positions. Employees then completed what we call a JAT, which stands for a Job Analysis Tool. So, that was the employee's chance to give input on what they actually do within their position. This was then sent to their supervisors, who were able to have input on that JAT as well. We reviewed the types and the level of work that all of these positions were doing. So, how much responsibility did they have? How much skills were required for the job? How much education was needed? So, we went through all of that with these positions. The next part of it was the compensation analysis, where we reviewed external market information. And then we compared that against our internal equity. And by internal equity, we looked within the organization, comparable jobs, what were they doing and how did they line up? I'm sorry, that got a little high there on that. This is a quick timeline of what we've done. This process started in July of 2022. That's when we posted the RFP. And we did have a tight timeline on this because we wanted to make sure we could implement this within the 2024 budget. In October of 2022, we completed the information for our vendor, who was by that time selected. And we began giving them information to compile our analysis. This actually kicked off at the end of November of 2022. And into December of 2022, we began having focus groups with employees, with supervisors, with management to get their input. We also sent out the Job Analysis Tool at this time. And so, we recognized that it was over a holiday break, so we extended that so that employees would have time to give feedback. In January, February of this year, they had compiled that information, began their market analysis, and began to provide feedback to the management team. In March, we had meetings with department leadership to review those grade recommendations. And we began providing preliminary results from this study to both the budget team and county leadership. In April, you'll recall that Evergreen did come down and do a presentation to the commission. And we began seeking feedback from the departments on those adjustments. In May of this year, we continued with that feedback and the individual adjustments from departments. We recognized that once we got information back, we still had to have some conversations. And that leads us into July and August. In July, departments received spreadsheets that had individual placements on them, and they are in the process of reviewing them right now and having communication with HR about any of those adjustments that they see moving forward. I will tell you, we do not have a lot of feedback going on right now. So, to me, that seems like all this work that we've done upfront with communication has done a very good job. And of course, in August, we're anticipating the adoption of the 2024 budget. Again, this is a recap from the April meeting with Evergreen. We are recommending a hybrid model implementation, which means there would be a realignment of employees in their new grade system. It would give full credit to employees for their time and position, so that current classification or their job that they're holding. It would give half credit for any time that they had at the county. So, that would assist us with longevity and compression within those departments. Employees would move to the new placement and the grade, and they would, we are recommending that they receive a general pay adjustment in January of 2024, in addition to the Evergreen adjustment. Again, the next steps, we're in the process of this, where departments are reviewing that individual spreadsheet. We have communication with HR regarding questions and concerns with departments. Next step, of course, would be for the BOCC to adopt the budget and again, implement that 2024 Evergreen study, along with the general pay adjustment. Are there any questions about that?
Well, the fact you haven't had a lot of feedback might, might be very important information that.
We also have all of our information, not individual placements, but the report and things of that nature, all the communication that we've had so far is available on E-line under Human Resources, Evergreen Compensation Study. So, if there's questions, employees can go out and find that.
Okay.
I've been through that link. It's, it's helpful. But this is, there's a lot of information there. If, if employees have questions, are they able to call your office and somebody can walk them through specifics, how they would specifically impact their pay grade and their classification? Is that, would you recommend that? I mean, we, this is what, 1,400-plus employees?
So, let me first start by saying, we, this is not adopted yet. So, everything that we have will depend on what the commission approves. Employees will receive letters in September regarding their actual salaries and their placements. But there is information on E-line where if someone knew what new grade they were moving into, they could do those calculations. And we give three different examples of how to calculate that.
But if adopted in September, they'll get a letter that'll spell out exactly. Okay. That was my question.
Okay. I know probably, I think you've told this, you told us this in the past already, but I'd like to be reminded, what was the municipalities we were compared with?
I'm sorry, I don't have that information in front of me. We looked, I know at, I'm looking at, city of Wichita.
City of Wichita, Johnson County, Weynott County.
Shawnee County. I'm sorry, we'll, we'll get this for you. Yeah.
That's fine. We can get that.
Yeah, it's in the report. We do list them out in the report.
And, and again, I, you know, Johnson County is vastly different than Sedgwick County. We always say that. But their economy is actually, it's a, it's different than Sedgwick County. You know, the housing costs are different, things like that.
It was all adjusted.
Is that taken into account?
Yes, it was adjusted. Everything was adjusted.
And I think for us to move forward, I think we have to have some numbers. I mean, we haven't seen, you know, what's the cost of whatever the recommendations are? We, I, I think we need to have some idea what we're talking about in terms of cost for us to make a decision.
It's in the recommended budget.
It's in the budget. Okay. Well, I see that.
And Commissioner, I think we had reviewed those in a staff meeting a while back, so we can pull that. And Lorian had put together a few tables for you guys, so we can put that back together and send it around.
I guess I don't see any. Okay. All right. I, I'll hold my questions. Thank you. Okay. Also, I know we have our fellow electeds here. Do you all have some questions or any specific questions from the row office this time? Okay. Well, if you do, while we're talking about it, raise your hand. And then, okay. All right. What other questions do we have? This is a great summary of, the timeline was really good to, to see.
I apologize, my picture was too big on the screen, but.
Yeah. It's, all right. What else we have? Okay. We're good? Okay. Tom?
All right. We'll give Nicole a chance to switch PowerPoints here, and then Sheena can talk about our discussion on parental leave. Sheena might set the stage for this just a little bit, too.
Okay. So, we are bringing to you to talk about the proposed paid parental leave policy. As Tom mentioned earlier in the meeting, we've been talking this, about this for several years. So, this has been brought up, something to challenge staff to look into. And we have put together a policy. We put this policy through the Policy Review Committee. And when I talk about the policy, I am going to reference how it is written today. I know there's been further discussion with the commission, but just know that this is how it was presented, and I know if there's any changes, we can talk through those. The reason why that we looked at this was we see that there's a need with our employees. We've looked at some of the benefits that this would provide our employees. And it does provide family bonding time with new babies or new children in the home, allowing people to be in a paid status during that. It assists parents with those foster children that they may have, and employees with childcare. That's one thing that we've talked about as an organization, is how difficult it is to find childcare, specifically infant childcare. It supports the physical and mental health of employees and their families. We know that when employees return to work because they have to have that paycheck, sometimes their mind is elsewhere. They're concerned about what's going on at home. And it also allows parents to build up leave time for future occurrences where they may need it. So, if an employee is not using this time, they might be able to build up some sicker vacation time that they may need to use in the future to take care of their families. It's also stated in our policy that it promotes healthy families and communities overall. The paid parental leave benefits to Sedgwick County. It's a family-oriented policy that matches our organizational values. And specifically, two of these values that I would like to call out are compassion. And we talk about having compassion for those that we serve, and we serve our internal customers as well. So, it's not always external that we're looking at. We're facing inward. These are the employees that we need to provide this service to. And also innovation. We talk about empowering new ideas and creative solutions. And I think this is one of those innovative ideas. It's a solution that we are looking to retain employees and to attract employees to our organization while they're counting any type of leave benefit. It also supports women, foster families and adoption, and reinforces our equity and governance mission. That is their updated term for D E I as well. So we want to support that. Improves employee benefit, benefits, and also aids in recruiting, as I mentioned before. It also builds employee loyalty and retention. By again, taking care of them in this chapter of their lives, we can build that loyalty from employees. And also, finally, there's an article recommended by the American Psychological Association talking about the need for parental leave within the organizations. Our overview of the parental leave policy draft allows paid time off for any parent when they're, when a child is brought into the home, whether that's through natural birth, adoption, or foster placement. Employees must be full time and employed at least 180 continuous days with no break in service of that 180 days. Those benefits are based on a rolling year, which is how we align our F M L calendars as well. And it must be taken within six months of the event. And by event, I mean the birth of the child, the adoption, or the foster placement. If an employee is eligible, they must use this parental leave in conjunction with F M L. So both of these would be applied at the same time. And I might remind you that F M L is not guaranteed paid time. It's paid protected time. But some employees enter into F M L in a non-paid status because they don't have that accrued leave.
Good point.
The amount of leave as proposed in the policy that we have discussed is at eight weeks. However, I know the commission has had discussions of anywhere between four and eight weeks. I also want to put up here, the Pregnancy Discrimination Act under the A D A requires us to make accommodations. And oftentimes, in this particular situation, excuse me, that is unpaid time because employees are not eligible for F M L, so they're looking for an accommodation. Thank you. And typically, under those accommodations, according to their doctor, could be anywhere from six to eight weeks. We looked at some other public employers and what their policies were. The federal government allows 12 paid weeks. The state of Kansas pays eight paid weeks for a primary giver, caregiver, and four paid weeks for a secondary. So they force the employee to determine whether they are the primary or secondary. Johnson County has four paid weeks. The city of Wichita and U S D 259 currently do not have any paid parental leave, but they do offer F M L. When we look at the private sector, we found quite a few of the Starbucks, six paid weeks for their baristas. Walmart is 10 paid weeks. Target, four paid weeks. Lowe's, 10 paid weeks for the maternal parent, two paid weeks for paternal parent, and two paid weeks, additional paid weeks for non-birthing parents. Ascension has two paid weeks for parents and 10 paid weeks for the birthing parent. So that means in total, if that's a birthing parent, they could have 12 weeks. And Cox Communication has eight paid weeks. I know one that's not on here, but I thought it was really fascinating was Netflix offers one year, which I thought was really interesting. So we tried to do some comparisons of what private versus public.
Was that a series, a Netflix series?
One full year.
Just ask.
So I've asked Lindsay to come up and walk through the next two slides because these are the fiscal notes and how much we are looking for the cost of this program.
Okay, so commissioners, we really, when you stop and think about the practical effects of this and what the fiscal impact is, I truly don't expect a lot. Now, this next slide we'll get into is kind of a worst case scenario, but let's talk about why I say that. When we have employees who take time off, if they're salaried and, and getting paid parental leave, nothing changes, right? Now, there may be others who may need to fill in and take on those duties if they're salaried. One would expect maybe their salaried peers in similar positions to do that work. If they're hourly, there could be some cost from the additional overtime that's worked. But we budget for 100% of a position being filled 100% of the year. So whether that person is in paid status as, and, and actually, you know, providing some work productivity and/or if they are on paid leave, in terms of actual dollars paid for that employee, there's no change. It's really going to be where that overtime comes in from those other folks. So what we did is we looked at an absolute worst case scenario. And so let's say we have roughly 70 users in the course of a year. I think we figured there's roughly 50 to 70 folks who typically take this in the course of a year. So looking at the high end of that. And so when I, and I, when I say, sorry, when I say take this, they have F M L because they have some kind of event. So let's say there's 70 of those folks, and let's say that they are earning the median salary around $50,000 for a year. That's our county wage. A four-week program could cost up to roughly $170,000. And that assumes that every hour that that person is gone is being worked by someone of an equivalent wage for, and earning that one and a half time pay. And then we also, of course, have to factor in the payroll taxes that we pay on top of those. So that's about $170,000 estimate across the entire organization. That could be grant funds, could be our auto license fund, could be, you know, the general fund, any of those. This cost is spread out across the entire 42 funds that we have. That's approximately equivalent to 0.1% of our total personnel budget. So not actually a tremendous impact, even in this worst case, which assumes hourly workers are making up every single hour of this and no salaried employees are doing it. The eight-week program, I'm sure surprises you, is twice that cost. Same exact assumptions. And of course, it's about 0.2% of the total budget. So while those dollars sound large, they're fairly negligible in the scope of the entire personnel budget that we have here at the county. So any questions before I walk away?
Well, that's helpful, Lindsay. So you're looking for, I see the recommendation is eight, is it really the, the discussion? Maybe commissioners have other questions, but it looks to me like it's a, you're looking for guidance on a four to eight week, a four week or eight week?
That's correct. We are looking for guidance on that.
Is there any other?
What were the Netflix policy? The uterus.
Okay, so, but there might be other questions besides the four to eight, but so, yeah.
I have a number of questions and I guess comments, but so this calculation, are you assuming, you said every hour that that person would be gone, somebody else would fill their space?
Every hour they're gone, an hourly employee would be earning overtime at the median salary rate, yes. But in real life, that's not going to happen.
Okay. And then you, I guess I, I'm surprised by this, but salary, salaried employees can be off for eight weeks and get paid their full wage, and this would not be, they would get that now without this policy or something?
No, not without this policy. They would have to take leave. But that's what I was trying to say is with a salaried employee, the expectation would be that no one else is stepping in to earn overtime in order to take over their job duties. You would expect, if there's a salary employee doing the work, you would expect a similarly situated salary employee to absorb their duties while they're gone.
Well, I guess I'd like to recognize that those other employees are, are carrying a heavier load. You're not looking 40 hours, you're looking 80 hours or whatever. Okay. There's that truth. Let's go back to a couple of other things on here. State of Kansas did theirs by executive order. This was not legislative debate. They did this actually fairly recently. The Governor Kelly changed it. Governor Collier did it three weeks and six weeks. It was changed after that when Governor Kelly got in office to eight, four weeks and eight weeks. But I guess I'd say this, that other, other employment policies are generally debated by the legislature, but for some reason, this one was not. Longevity pays a great example. That's something they, it's in statute. It's a great example. So anyway, this is done by executive order. Johnson County, four weeks. I think that's, and that's, that's for any parent, including the birthing mother or any, any parent. Is that correct?
That's how I understand it, yes.
Okay. Anybody here, I did check with Spirit and Coke and Cargill and a few other of our larger companies, local. Does anybody else have that data besides me? I don't.
I know we've had an email thread of many things. We just put a few up here on the, on the screen.
I mean, when we, I'd say if you look at the average, average business out there, I mean, I don't know that I would necessarily consider this list of businesses to be, you know, considering a, if you looked at every business and said, what's considered the average policy of, of every business, I don't think we'd see these numbers here, is my point. So, you know, Starbucks, six weeks paid, that's great for Starbucks, but I'm not sure that every, you know, every bit. I was at an event not too long ago, about 25 business owners. I asked the question about how many of you guys provide parental leave, and not one of them did. So it, I just know that, I guess I would not say this is considered a normal average of what happens in Sedgwick County across businesses everywhere. So we do see some examples here, but I'd say that our proposed policy here is more generous from, more generous, considerably more generous than Spirit, Cargill, and Coke. So I want to just make that, make that point. I, I did talk to staff. I found out that there is a, the way the policy is written, it provides the same benefit for anybody in the family regardless of their situation. It's, it's under the idea of bonding leave. I guess that's why, maybe you should call it bonding leave rather than parental leave, just a thought there.
It's stated in the purpose as bonding.
Okay. But there's also, I think, a secondary reality here, and that is, that's recovery, especially for the birthing mother. And I noticed that on this list of examples here, that Ascension and Lowe's, on your, on your sheet of examples, does what some of the companies, many of the companies that have parental leaves, they, a lot of them will do this separately where they provide a benefit for a birthing mom. Vaginal leave would be one set of time off, a set of time off. And if it's a cesarean birth, it's a little bit more time off. That's, that's a fairly normal thing to see out there. So I understand under the F M L, we'd have to potentially have them qualify for F M L. And under F M L policy, we'd, we would make the choice as an employer potentially to pay them in terms of their situation, whether it be vaginal or cesarean birth. That might be an option for us. And then bonding leave could be something we talk about separately that would be for every parent.
No, under F M L, if you're, for the birth of a child, you're eligible up to 12 weeks. It does not matter how the baby is born.
I understand, but that's unpaid time off. I'm saying as an employer, we could choose to pay them based on their, their time to, I think reasonable time to recover from what they just went through.
I, I think we're mixing this bonding policy with a medical leave, and I don't think we need to intermix the two.
I'm probably going to be the alone person on this again. I'll just say, I, I think that we should start in a more of a moderate position. I would personally, rather, rather than starting with what's proposed, I think it's actually, actually what's proposed is the most generous policy amongst any government in the state of Kansas. So I, I would suggest this is a little bit more generous as a starting point. I would rather see us start out something more moderate. I would bifurcate this policy to bonding, bonding leave and, and medical, medical leave. I would like to see a bonding leave for any parent for birth or adoption, as for father or mother. And in addition to that, I'd like to see a maternal leave for a recovering mother that is provided vaginal or cesarean birth of four weeks, I'm sorry, have two weeks for vaginal additional and four weeks cesarean additional. So for that mother, bonding leave plus birth, they would either get four weeks off or six weeks off depending on the situation. And the fathers would have, or the other person in the home that's a caregiver of that child would have two weeks off. So to me, that's a moderate policy that's reasonable, it's defendable. I think it's a step in the right direction. It's much more than what U S D 259 does. It's more than what Wichita does. It is based on getting us started, but it's not something that's so generous that we can't roll it back. So if you start out with the most generous policy of the state of Kansas, you're going to really have a hard time bringing this back down to something more moderate in the future. So I think we should start out going in that direction, but I would rather not see us go to the extent that this policy has been drafted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. Couple of questions. Are we going to talk about the policy or just the briefing?
We can talk about whatever you would like.
Well, first of all, let me start with Lindsay on your definition. The way I understand it, you're saying that we're, we budget for the whole year for people being here every day, so it doesn't impact our budget. That's what you're saying.
I, I think it will for the folks who are now working overtime to compensate for those hours. That is not necessarily anticipated, but I also, it's very hard to estimate which of these positions from year to year would be that type of position versus a salaried position.
But you're only counting overtime. You don't count the time that the employees that are on leave are costing the county.
Right, because that's already baked into the budget.
And, and that's where I think, I understand where you're coming from because you did the same thing with Juneteenth.
Yes.
And I disagreed with you on every step because of your math. Because we're a service organization.
Right.
We don't produce airplanes. We don't build cars. We provide a service. So the staff has decided that we need X number of employees to provide this service. And so we don't hire 20 more than that. We hire exactly what we need to perform that service. So as a result of that, we budget for those employees. When we're not here, the taxpayers are still paying for that, no matter what.
Right.
That's an expense that we have, that the taxpayers have. And I look out for the taxpayers. So there is an expense for those employees not being here. The taxpayers are paying for that. So that needs to be included in the cost of what it is, just like Juneteenth. You and I went around and around, and I say it costs close to a million dollars a year for us to do that. And you said, no, it doesn't cost us anything because we already have it in the budget. So we're, we're really at two opposite ends, and we're still at two opposite ends with this. I just want to make that point, that it does cost us money. So let me talk about the, the policy, because that's, this is what we're going to vote on, not, not your briefing, okay? A couple of things in the policy. I just want to make sure that I understand your definitions. If I read your definitions on item B or Delta, it says that it's a rolling calendar year, 12 months. That means that any employee can get this option one time in 12 months.
That is correct.
Okay. I, I want that clarified because it is possible with, with a parent having a child, they could have two within 12 months.
Yes, and as, yes. But as the policy is written, they can only use this benefit one time per child for a total of eight weeks, or if you want to change that, the total amount of weeks in that rolling calendar year.
Okay.
So it would never be more, as written, never be more than eight weeks in 12 months.
I can live with that because, you know, that you and I have had the discussion over and over again on foster care. And foster care, you could have a child for a short period of time, they go away, have another one a short period of time, they go away. We could have somebody that has a foster child five or six times in a year, and I don't want to look at that differently than we look at someone that has natural child growth. So as long as that definition, we all agree that that definition is one time in 12 months. We're good with that?
Yes. And sir, I might also point out, too, on the first page under item C, in the case of short-term foster placements or when the child or children are no longer in the care of the employee, the benefit stops.
Okay. My last question is on item H. Does an employee on paid parental leave may work a second job as long as the employee meets the standard for paid parental leave from Sedgwick County? And that seems to me to be contrary to our purpose that says that it allows employees the ability to bond with a child following adoption, birth, foster care, replacement. I don't understand why we would say that you don't have to work for us, but you can work for somebody else.
So this is exactly how it lines with our F M L policy. A lot of our employees have to have second jobs to make ends meet, or they might have a second job, maybe even with military of having a second. with military of having a second form of income. As long as they meet those parameters, and it's not in conflict with their current position, they're able to do that.
So, doesn't that contradict our purpose of allowing them to bond?
I don't feel that it does.
Well, as long as that's in there, you don't have my problem. Thank you.
Okay. Well, on that, I, I would agree with your explanation. Somebody may have a part-time job for a second income, and that part-time job, that second income may not even have any kind of parental leave, so they may end up having to quit under this, if we changed it, they'd have to quit that second job, because, because we'd have a policy that says you cannot have a second job, that may not have any kind of benefit. So, I understand what you're saying, Sheena. So, I just wanted to re-clarify that. Go ahead.
Just a clarifying question. So, on the foster care piece, if someone has a foster care, foster care child for, say, three days, and they return them, they get paid for, if they apply for this, they get paid for three days, but they only get that once every 12 month, every 12 year, 12 month rolling calendar?
So, in that example, if they had another foster placement within that 12-month rolling period, they could use it again, but not for the same child, but no more than eight weeks as proposed?
It just says, use of this program may be used only once per child.
Yes, once per child.
So, they have 10 foster kids in a year, they can use it as long as they don't exceed eight weeks, the way this is written?
Yes. So, if you look on page two, item D, it states, leave for each event can total no more than eight hour, or I'm sorry, eight weeks, and must be taken within six months of the event. For example, an employee may use three weeks for placement of a child in foster care within six months of the placement, and five weeks for the birth of a child within six months of the birth, but occur at different times within the same 12-month rolling period.
Yeah, maybe you intend, maybe what you intend by this language, I think that this is confusing, because I don't think that's what this says. In my personal opinion, under 3A, B, I think it's, it says one child is a qualifier, and after that, it's no longer available to any of the foster kids that might come into the home after that. So, I don't, I don't think it's clear, personally.
So, that would be a different child that's coming in. It's only one child.
I understand it says that the benefit may only be used once.
Per child.
Okay, so. I see your point. I still think it's problematic. Okay. Also, foster care is primarily, again, I wish we didn't have to have foster care, but, and I am very supportive of foster care. I want to do anything I can to encourage foster care. However, to me, it's a little bit different. Foster care is primarily a temporary home for a child that doesn't have parents that can take care of that child. It's primarily children that are from abused and neglected situations. Unfortunately, under 367, we also have children who are not categorized by being neglected or abused, but basically being criminogenic behavior end up in these foster situations as well. So, the intent of foster care is to hopefully remedy the situation, return these children back to their natural home. That's where they, that's where they belong, ideally. So, and then the idea of using foster care for bonding leave is a little bit, I'm not sure that I think that's the best idea. I don't know that I, I, I'm not sure I see that the same way as an adoption or a natural birth. I love foster parents, but I'm not so sure that we want to treat those situations exactly the same. So, again, many of the other policies I'm reading, they provide a benefit for natural, for birth and for adoption, but not for foster care. So, we might want to think that through just a little bit. And I also think it's complicated, because a lot of these placements may be only for a day or two, or three, you know, could be, could be six months, maybe longer, but many of these placements are very short for a few days. And so, I don't know how that logistically works, getting the benefit started, having this child for a few days, and then having to change the situation yet again. So, in terms of the, the paperwork, or whatever's required to get this started and stopped, I think it's going to be very logistically difficult. And then also, the 90-day, I'm sorry, 180 days for qualification, it just seems like that should be 270 for obvious reasons. Thank you.
Chairman? So, a couple of thoughts and a couple of questions. To point out, in the foster care situation, 70% of these kids in our foster care system are ending up in the criminal justice system. One out of five kids that age out of foster care will end up homeless within a year. So, Sedgwick County, I'm begging you, Sedgwick County staff, please foster. We need more foster parents. These kids need stability. They need stability, and we pay a, a dramatic financial impact to this community because of a failing foster care system. So, we need more foster parents. And whatever policy we can come up with to get more foster parents, I will be incredibly supportive of. Staffing stability is, in my opinion, the number one thing that we have to do here in this budget. I'm grateful that we're having this conversation about parental leave. I, I welcome the conversation between four weeks and eight weeks. I don't want to, I don't want this conversation to turn into, we're going to choose the least amount we can get away with, because that's not the heart of what we're trying to accomplish here. What we're trying to accomplish here is creating a policy where our employees feel valued, and a policy to where we are securing and enabling the health and the well-being of our staff. So, although I entertain the conversation between four weeks and eight weeks, I think we need to do it with the proper premise. This isn't choosing what least amount we can get away from. It's not the heart of what we're trying to accomplish here. With that being said, are there any departments, particularly in public safety, when you review this and you meet with them on parental leave policy, are there any departments that have any heartburn, that we might not be able to perform some sort of service, particularly in public safety, because they can't calculate, you know, the amount of people that might be on leave for this?
Sure. I think there's some concern, because there is no way to map out exactly how many people or which parent it would affect. But we know, too, many of these employees that are taking leave, again, if they're not eligible for FML, we're making an ADA accommodation for that. If they're eligible for FML, we assume that they're going to be gone for 12 weeks, and that short time period does create, you know, some, yeah, in departments. But that could be said for any medical leave as well.
I think you're right. It's hard to measure and anticipate. This is one of those policies, when you walk in, even in good faith, it's hard to predict and forecast the impact. I get it. But again, if staffing stability is our biggest objective when it comes to what we're trying to accomplish in this budget, and trying to accomplish in our workforce, then I think this is a necessary policy. And again, it's about the health and the well-being of our, of our staff. Do you happen to know what is the average age of a Sedgwick County employee would be?
I think the average age is, I believe it's in the 40s.
Okay. So, let me, let me rephrase the question. Are we actively trying to recruit a new generation of employees in Sedgwick County?
Yes.
And we expect them to probably start families and have families?
Yes.
So, parental leave policy is a good benefit to have, to go after young families and attract them to doing work in Sedgwick County, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. I, I just think this is, it's long overdue, frankly. Long overdue. As a private business owner, I had to approach this probably a decade ago in order to retain staff. So, this is a long overdue policy. I applaud us in having this conversation, totally open to the idea between four and eight weeks. But my hope is that when we get through this budget, or heck, even before that, that we can have a policy where our workforce looks to us and says that we value families in Sedgwick County, including foster families.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to piggyback on a lot of what Commissioner Beatty said, because that was kind of where I was going with this as well, is if we're talking about stability of the workforce and attracting and retaining new talent, a lot of times that means young talent. And so, how can we look better as an organization to the outside? Well, a great thing that we can do for our young families is provide them the time to not only bond, but to heal after having a child or bringing a child into the family. When you, as a lot of us know, when you bring a baby or a kid into your family, your whole life is upended, and you have to figure out what your new normal looks like. If we don't give our staff the time to figure that out, then they're bringing a lot of stress and unnecessary worry with them to the job, which is going to make them less productive in the first place. So, I think it's a huge morale boost, but I think it's going to be great to attract talent. I personally think it's, it's really sad that three of the largest organizations in this community don't provide parental leave. I think we're failing a ton of people by having us in 259 and Wichita all not there. I think that we could all do so much better. We've had talks about fostering kids for so long, it seems like, and people continue to say how broken the system is. But here is a great way that we can help do our part in fixing a little piece of it by making it easier to be a foster family. So, I applaud this. I think that we should not, not do policy that's going to help so many families, because maybe one person might try and abuse the system. I don't think it's good to set policies thinking the worst of people. I think we should always think the best of our staff, because we have incredible people that work for Sedgwick County, and we need to treat them as such. I do, I would like to just go talk about the Juneteenth and how that is a little bit different. When we talk about Juneteenth, we're talking about the entire organization is off that can be. With this policy, we're talking about at most 70 people, more than likely, in different departments. So, it's not like the whole organization is shutting down. It's one person here, one person there. And yes, that can be hard to cover sometimes, but it's not impossible. People are doing it now. I mean, as a, as a mom, I came back immediately after having the girls, but I had to spend two weeks in the hospital. I know that other people are going to be in that same position, so we're already figuring out how to cover that. And I don't think it's going to be a significant change if we enact a parental policy. I think this is pastime that this has been needed. I think it's so great for our, our staff here, and then, like I said, to recruit and retain young professionals. And this is one of the things that I know as a young parent, I looked for when I was having babies, the first round, my older three, do they have parental leave? Because I did not want to have to leave my baby a week after I had them, like I had to when I had my first, because I wasn't in an organization that, that had that in place. So, thank you so much for doing this work. It's incredible. I hope we can get this passed. I would love to see eight weeks, because I think that's the least we can do for our staff here, because they put in so much work for us. I think we need to be taking care of them as well. So, I appreciate this.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Well, Sheena, I reflected on your answer, okay? And, and I appreciate it. I'm not faultless on anything, so I like the fact that people will tell me what's on their mind. So, let's go back to the part-time job. And, and you gave me a good answer. I appreciate that. What I don't want to see is someone decides to use this and increase their hours, go full-time someplace else. So, I don't know if we can write it in here that they can keep the part-time job as long as it's not an increase, because if, if they start using this as a full-time job, then we're not allowing them to bond with the child. So, it defeats our basic purpose. So, if there's somehow that we can say, hey, as long as your part-time job is not an increase in any of the hours, I don't know how you write that, but you're smarter than I am on this. I could live with that. So, thank you again for your response, because it made me reflect on what our employees are really having to do.
I think Justin was going to add some comments.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Dennis, I was going to say on, on that item, if it be the, you know, the will of the board or staff in putting this together, it may require some additional analysis, but the, the thought could be to just be silent on second job. We do, as Sheena pointed out, we have a FMLA policy that addresses that issue, and I don't think it absolutely has to be in this policy, that the second job is addressed, so it could be, potentially be silent on that. Again, that's kind of a, somewhat an examined thought on my part. I haven't had a chance to fully delve into that, but I think that's a possibility, because I, it's between that employee and another employer. But I also understand the concerns you're mentioning, Commissioners.
Good information, Justin. Well, I'm kind of, my, my voice is that I, I agree that a policy is needed. I'm okay with the policy, and I'm okay with debating four or eight weeks as amended, maybe feedback. I don't really have a strong sense. I understand the eight-week conversation that Commissioner Howell mentioned, and maybe it's something less than eight weeks, but it doesn't, I, I'm not expert enough on that to, to weigh. I, I do have some friends. I, I'm quite surprised if you had a meeting with 25 business owners, and all 25 said no. That's, I'd be curious to know what 25 businesses those were. I, I don't have, I don't have any meetings with 25 business owners at one time, so, anyway. But we can debate also. Justin's idea is, is valuable. Maybe we are silent on that to just eliminate that, because who knows? Maybe they had a part-time job. Maybe they have an opportunity to have a part-time job, or the, as we talked, the military has a weekend that they've got to perform. So, maybe, maybe we don't get into that employee and their employer. That almost actually makes a little more sense to me. But, and then we could also, if you present it, in my opinion, you present it in time for budget, when we can, Commissioners can also propose any amendments to the, to the policy, to the policy itself for the four and eight-week decision debate. That, that's my feeling, but now we've got, sorry, somebody?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you. Justin sent an email not too long ago stating that he would like to keep, if we do this, to have the same policy for everyone, basically. And I think it's just a really good point to say that, not that this is everybody's business, but I'll go ahead and say it. When I had my girls, I was told that I wasn't allowed to lift over 10 pounds for eight weeks. So, a lot of our positions, lifting is going to be involved in what they do. So, if we want to make sure that we're doing justice to our new parents, especially our new mothers, then eight weeks is really what is needed, just because that's how long it takes to recover physically from having a C-section. And I don't think that we should not throw that out there, because that's, that's very important as we're having a parental leave conversation.
Nice point. What else? Commissioner?
I am just, thank you for a chance to speak. And I'm curious, do we have employees right now that take FML for adoptions and for foster care?
Yes, sir.
You do. And so, when we talk about 70 employees, that's, that's with that basic understanding exactly how many employees are taking off for births, adoptions, and foster care?
So, how we came up with that number is we looked at how many FML cases we had for birth or bonding with the baby, and then we also looked at how many dependents we're adding on our health insurance. So, we know that it's somewhere a mix of those numbers, because not everyone takes FML, and not everyone is on our health insurance. So, it's our best guess putting all of those factors into place.
So, again, let me, let me reiterate. I'm not against a policy. I think this is a step in the right direction. I'm a little concerned about being kind of more generous than any, any other organization in the state of Kansas. To me, that's a little bit not the place to start. So, my moderate idea I presented a minute ago was two, two weeks bonding leave for any employee that would be qualified under this policy. And then I talked about two weeks additional for vaginal birth, and two weeks additional on top of that for cesarean birth. So, for a, a parent of any type, any, any qualifier would get two weeks off through a bonding leave policy, then I would see us make a choice under the FML to pay a, a employee who had, who had undergone a vaginal birth or cesarean birth additional time, two weeks or four weeks. So, everybody would get two weeks or four weeks or six weeks off depending on the situation. And then, to Commissioner Lopez's point, I think maybe that moderate policy, starting point should be two weeks, three weeks, and six weeks. So, that would be three weeks off for vaginal birth, six weeks off for cesarean birth, paid under FML, we make that choice, plus two weeks bonding leave. So, it would be two weeks for a parent for bonding, five weeks off for vaginal birth, and eight weeks off for cesarean birth. That would be, to me, a reasonable, moderate policy to start, because we can always enhance it later. If you find out this is, you know, not something we can handle financially, we can always talk about enhancing that in the future. I hate to start out being the most generous of the state of Kansas. Second of all, in terms of the fiscal note, I asked about a fiscal note early in the process on this, and we didn't, first response was, there is no fiscal note, because it's already paying everybody to do whatever. Again, I also think that the 270-day qualifier, something that someone, so we ought to be thinking about that for a couple of reasons. But in terms of fiscal note, if you take the $50,000 salary mark times 1.3 because of, because of benefits that are added to that, that's $65,000 per employee is what that costs the county. Take that times your 70 employees, that's $10,000 per employee for the eight weeks they would be off, if that's, if that's what we did. Times the 70 employees, that's $700,000. And if you add in the cost for other employees, $340,000 for eight weeks off, that's a thousand, that's $1,040,000. that's a thousand, that's $1,040,000. That would be a reasonable fiscal note to look at this in terms of the way that Commissioner Dennis presented this earlier. So 70 employees under the way the policy was written initially, without any changes, I, I think it does cost the county a little more than a million dollars. So you think about a million dollars in salary enhancement to all of our employees. You know, one of, one of our biggest challenges, of course, is getting our salary up for all of our employees. So again, by being maybe more generous than we need to be at the beginning of this policy, it actually, I think, is a zero-sum game approach to salary. You're not being able to put the same dollars towards other employees who don't have children. So I want to be very careful to be reasonably thoughtful and have a policy that makes a lot of sense that's competitive for employees. But I don't want to be so generous that we don't, we take away dollars that could be used to help other employees get their competitive wage. So again, I want to be very careful. So I hope that makes sense. Thank you.
Chairman, can I, can I respond?
Sure.
So I, I understand when you look at the costs of a program, how you would look at that. The, the distinction for me is many of those costs are already baked into a budget. So I am looking at what is the additional cost to impose a new program? That's what this estimation is based on. We already planned for that in the forecast. We planned for that in the budget. So to call it a salary enhancement, I think, is, is maybe not how I would describe it because we're really not improving anybody's salary through this. We're simply allowing them to have paid time off. Now, they could have used their own sick leave for that. Perhaps they could have been in hours without pay. So it's hard to know because every employee can be different and how they choose to use their benefits is up to them, which is why this is all a wag in the first place. But in terms of additional cost to the county's budget, I think this is how that comes about. Now, I understand there's lost productivity, there's less value, there's less service that we're providing to the community. That is, is more of an intangible cost and we can certainly try and compute that after we have a year of data. But going into it right now without any kind of data on salaried versus hourly versus what the type of, of coverage is in those departments, a lot of them are already short-staffed. It's just there are so many moving parts, it's hard to give you a good figure right now. But I just wanted to explain why I'm coming at it from this perspective.
Okay, Commissioner Beatty?
Yeah, when, when do we want to address this? This isn't a budget item, correct? I mean, this is, okay, so are we, are you proposing that we try to deal with this tomorrow? Are we? Okay.
It's gotten a little bit complicated here, but let me.
Does it have 24 budget impact, probably is what your question is.
Part of it, it just, but we don't have to, we're not a, this isn't part of it. Well, does it have?
I don't. Go ahead, Lindsey.
To the extent that there is any fiscal impact, please bear in mind that we have a compensation contingency in both 2023 and 2024. That would be accessible in either of these circumstances if necessary, though I would expect there would be ample salary savings in every department because there aren't many that are totally full right now.
Yeah, my question is, I had mentioned budget earlier. This isn't, need to be adopted by the 23rd. My, my question is, there's a lot on the table here that I think we need to go through.
I don't, I don't think we're in a footrace with the budget. I think we, I hear, correct me if I'm wrong, I hear commission support for some type of policy. I, and I hear some conflict between medical leave policy and parent, what we're proposing here. I need to talk with my staff if there's a possibility to mesh that. And we'll do what we always do. We'll come back to you with a finite number of options. And I'm seeing two right offhand, some type of massage of the current policy that you've all seen. And it wasn't in my intention to get into the weeds of the policy today. I wanted to talk globally, but we got there. So I think we can tweak that policy as is, making some language change that I heard from the table today and bring that back as option one. And then option two, and I want to talk with Legal and Sheena before I commit to this, but if there is a way to mesh a medical leave component for mothers with parental leave, as I think where, as Commissioner Howell is at, we could bring back an option for that to consider. And then you can pick how you want to move forward.
That's a good question about that. Because in Justin's email, the reason why we were not going to do that is because it's going to hold us liable, saying that some parents are more deserving of time than other parents, which I think undervalues all families and all parents, whether you're having a baby, adopting a baby, fostering a child. We're all parents. We're all trying to do what's right by us and our kids. So I think meshing something is undervaluing our staff. And while I understand you need to do that, I would significantly push us not to say that some parents deserve it more than others and some parents are more parents than other parents because I just think that's full-heartedly wrong. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Justin.
Is it okay? Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Lopez, I did want to address, maybe elaborate a little bit further than what you're referring to would have just been on a parental leave policy. And there's obviously a whole other policy consideration for the board on it, just like the manager was talking about, and if you'd want to delve into parental and then amending somehow and adding in some sort of paid medical leave component. But, and I think to the extent Sheena's presentation included Lowe's, for example, just in what I could see, looking on their website, I think they, they have done both of those things. That's why they treat them differently. It's not all just a parental policy, for example, for them. They give extra leave, medical leave for, for mothers who have given birth. And so, but I think that's ultimately a call for you all to make if you would as a policy matter, if you want to delve into doing both. But what, how this was presented originally and also today was just a parental leave policy. And if you do have a parental leave policy, the, the best advice would be to treat everyone equally, as I indicated. But if you, if you do delve into it, it would be two separate policies. It would be amending your, your medical leave policy and adding that in, plus any parental leave policy you may end up adopting. Let me know if you have any questions on that, but I just wanted to elaborate a little further.
Thanks for clarifying.
Did the other, again, invite the other electeds or department to, any comments or questions? Go ahead.
I also think that we ought to clarify that the employee ought to be considered a caregiver. I, I don't think it says that anywhere. It says that you're a biological parent, but there's, there are situations out there where somebody might be a, a parent and for whatever reason, they're not a caregiver. I think that ought to be a requirement that they're a caregiver of the child. And in terms of the previous question, again, I, we hashed this out in, in a discussion I had with Legal. Again, I think as long as you are viewing the bonding leave as something for, for bonding purposes, I think that, again, I suggested two weeks for that. And in terms of the, of the medical leave, there's a situation where the birthing mother is recovering from a physical situation. And I think we ought to be, you know, sensitive to that. And it's, it's not the same for someone who didn't give birth. So I think it's, it's, it's considered reasonable and defendable to say, because this person went through a birth process, they get some time off to recover medically, you know, medically. To me, that's, that is defensible and I think that's reasonable to do that. Thank you.
I just, a couple of comments. The reason, they're, they're a sacrifice to do this. It's not like it's a freebie for the organization. They're a sacrifice for the organization to do this. But I do, and one of you said this, I can't remember who, we have to look at a younger workforce right now. We are an aging workforce and we are, we have occupations where young people are naturally attracted to it. EMS, fire, corrections. These are professions that we need young people in those positions. And this is part of trying to push forward with a healthy organization. What, what happens today, and I, we could talk about anecdotes, today, people just quit. When they get to that point, they're having a family, they get a decision thrown at them that you're going to be back in six weeks or you're out or you're on WAP status. They'll just quit. And this, we're looking for policies that will keep people here and build loyalty, as Sheena talked about, and, and move the organization forward to where we won't have 20 openings in paramedics, we won't have 20 openings in 911 and all the corrections openings. If we could fill these positions with a healthy policy that advocates for families, I think organizationally, in the long term, past our time here probably, it will make this organization better. And that's the whole goal. When we started this discussion two years ago, is long-term look, long-term view at the organization, maybe past our tenure. So that's, I just want to explain, that's the reason we're doing it. And I appreciate the conversation today. I think we have a couple of good alternatives to bring back to you. I want to talk with staff about how to mesh in some increased medical leave, if that's the will of the board, and maybe keep it separate from the parental leave. But, but, but do it comprehensively, organizationally, to where everybody understands what it is we're trying to do. So that's all we had, sir, for staff today.
Again, inviting the other electeds. Everybody's okay? Okay. All right, well, thank you, everybody. Have a good day. See you Wednesday, tomorrow. Okay.